Good evening, everyone.
Thank you for being here.
Call the meeting to order. This is the regular session of the Moore City Council for August 21st, 2018. Let's see, why don't we go ahead and stand for the invocation, please?
Pastor Ash.
This evening, as we prepare to go to the Lord in prayer, I just want to share with you briefly something that another pastor shared with me. He's much older and wiser, and he told me that each one of us walks with two buckets in our hands. One bucket has got water, the other bucket's got gasoline. And we all have a choice tonight, if we're going to throw the gasoline in the fire or if we're going to pour the water on it. I encourage us all tonight. There's a lot of emotions, a lot of anger, a lot of frustration. I encourage us all tonight to pour the water. Amen?
Amen.
Let us close our eyes and bow our heads for a moment of prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, Lord, and we ask for your help and your assistance, Lord, in order that we may submit to one another in love and respect and ultimately submit to you, Father. Lord, we pray for your blessing upon all that takes place tonight, Father. And ultimately, Father, we pray for your will to be done. Lord, I pray that you speak to us, sensitize us to hear your voice, and bless what takes place this evening, Father. We desire your favor. And we pray all these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and all God's people said.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the true republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Chedister.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Neal.
Here.
Mayor Madravol.
Here. Thank you. Council this time has to approve the agenda, or are there any additions and/or deletions that are necessary? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move.
Please mention a public hearing. Continue the night board once.
Okay, so there are two items under Section 4 of our, they're public hearings, item 4-1, 4-2. Those will not be heard today. They will be continued. Item 4-1 will be continued to September 4th, and item 4-2 will be continued to October 2nd of 18.
Thank you.
Those will be the only, the changes for tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please, oh, you already called the roll. We do have one item to, to.
To change the agenda?
Oh, okay, yeah, so do we have a vote or a motion to change that, the agenda?
Make a motion to change the agenda, as read.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Neal to make those changes to the agenda. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So now we'll proceed. We do have one item that we came out of closed session that we have to report. This is on item, this is item 1 of closed session. On a motion by Councilmember Chedister and a second by Councilmember Neal to approve the global settlement opened in the case of Griswold, LaSalle, Cobb, Dowd, and Jen versus City of Lemoore et al., case number 18C007, wherein the CSJV RMA will pay plaintiff $7,500 to resolve claim, all claims and other parties, providing releases and, and authorizes the city manager to sign and approve in a unanimous, unanimous vote of five to nothing. Now, this time we have public comment. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the city council on items of interest that are on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. It's recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes. So I do have two cards for public comment. The first one is Mr. Tom Reed.
Imagine, if you will, a teacher at Lemoore High School or West Hills College-Lemoore giving a student assignment to attend a report on a Lemoore City Council meeting. The report of the previous council meeting might go something like this. Well, it was a very lively meeting, but there were some problems. First, the mayor kept imploring those in attendance to refrain from speaking out of turn and loud behavior. I will have to give the mayor a C minus for conducting the meeting. There were those in the audience who kept speaking slash yelling out of turn. Glad my mom and dad were not in attendance. I will have to give the audience a D. One council member made an impassioned plea to another council member requesting a resignation to possibly protect the city from further embarrassment. I give that council member a B. The council member who seemed to be the target was continually eating and drinking a soda throughout the meeting and giving smirks and looks of derision toward speakers. A totally boorish behavior from someone who is supposed to represent our city. I will have to give that individual an F. Finally, there was one speaker who gave a great example of the compare and contrast exercise that is continually assigned. The comparison between the speaker and council member in question was amazing. You would have thought they were the same person. The contrast was significantly different. The speaker chose not to let the obstacles and victimhood from prior years define her. The others chose to dwell on a constantated victimhood and actually seems to revel in it. This speaker deserves a, a simply outstanding presentation. Overall, with all factors taken into consideration, I can only give a grade of C at best for the totality of the council meeting. There's room for all concern to improve their performance. Enough of the student assignment. Let's move to the animosity that exists between Mayor Madravol and Councilmember Blair. I don't know when it began, but obviously before both were members of this council at the same time. Neither, it seems, is willing to change. I would suppose that if while growing up, Councilmember Neal and his brother exhibited such behavior toward each other, their dad would have taken them behind the woodshed and delivered them both an attitude adjustment. We cannot do that. This has become a total embarrassment to the city of Lemoore. I am not sure that a censor is going to solve this problem based on statements made by Councilmember Blair. Perhaps it is time for both of you to leave this council or for both of you to offer sincere apologies to the citizenry of Lemoore and set about performing the betterment, for the betterment of our city, a task for which you were elected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next public comment is Amy Ward.
Hello, Amy Ward, CEO of Lemoore Chamber of Commerce. I just have three things to quickly touch on tonight. The very first one is last week we held our first ever Kings County Mega Mixer. I was pleasantly surprised to see some city staff there, as well as the mayor, and about close to 200 people attend this mega mixer. When I first took over as the CEO, it was my vision to have a more collaborative chamber, and we partnered with the Hanford Chamber, Corcoran Chamber, Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber, the Kings County Farm Bureau, and the Kings County Young Professionals for this. To have 200 people come out and see all of these people leave with stacks of business cards went far better than I could have ever imagined. So I would like to thank the city for their support in this. I know having the event in Hanford, you know, maybe we could have done it in Lemoore, maybe we could have done it here or there, but to see so much of our city out there is something that I truly, truly am proud of for us. Second, we also have our salute to Ag Banquet, September 7th. We will be honoring our Agricultureist of the Year Pete Hands and our Ag Supporter of the Year, which is the Kings County Farm Bureau. So we still have tickets available. I would love to see some people from the city out there. I know this is something that, you know, they, you guys typically come out for, and your support is truly valuable for these events. And then finally, I would also like to thank the Lemoore Police Department. Today, our chamber held a workshop at LPD and with the assistance of Commander Ochoa and Mark and Cody and all the great people over there, we were able to tell about 20 to 25 businesses and members and owners, managers, et cetera, et cetera, a little bit more about the partnerships that we have in this community. We also did the Milo training, and if you have not yet done it, I highly suggest it. It's pretty, it's pretty intense. But the thing that I think stood out to me the most was all the questions and answers and all of that portion of the event, to form those partnerships with the businesses. Obviously, the businesses deal with a lot day to day. They see good and bad within our community, so those kind of partnerships are important, especially if we want to be proactive and continue the path that we're on. So again, thank you to the city. Thank you to Chief Smith and to their team for facilitating this, and I do hope to see us build better futures. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, but if anyone else wants to come forward and speak on items that are not on the agenda, you're welcome.
Ed Rogers, 951 Tranquility Court here in Lemoore. I'd just like to say that everyone sitting behind me, I would like to thank all those individuals. I don't know them, other than they're citizens of this community like I am, and I'm glad that they take time out of their day, just like you all do up here, and spend time to do what you think's right. And I want to thank all those people for attending tonight. And on that note, I'd like to thank all of you for sitting up there because you're doing work that you shouldn't be doing, in my opinion. I think you should be figuring out how to get us some fresh water around this town and doing some other things. So I just want to thank you for the work you do because you do work that never gets thankful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comment, we'll move to ceremonial presentation. We have one. This is recognition of Lemoore Volunteer in Policing by Chief Smith.
Good evening, council members. Tonight is, it's an extreme honor to recognize one of our volunteers in policing members who has truly distinguished herself over the last couple of months. As you know, we released our Lemoore Police Department lip sync video just this past weekend, and I've been told it's up to hundreds of thousands of views, so it's pretty cool that we had that video released. But even more special was the meaning in the video. When I say that, in Lemoore, it's very important to us to partnership with our community. And I think it was important for all the officers assigned to make this video, make sure that it demonstrated our community as it is, special and unique. And if you saw the end of the video when we culminated with the last day of filming, we had hundreds of people show up from all walks of life, all diversity. It was truly a special occasion to see Lemoore come together, united, to, to end that video. And you also saw that I don't have very good dance moves, so I apologize for that upfront. But tonight, I'd like to recognize Jasmine Gomez. If Jasmine can come up front and center. So when we planned this video over the past couple of months, we had a lot of great ideas. The officers involved were busy preparing scripts and looking at places for locations to actually film the video, but we had one big problem. We didn't have a videographer. And Jasmine came forward and she brought all of her special talents as a videographer in, to our department. And what's cool about Jasmine is she has a full-time job. So she was doing this on police officer time, and police officer time, we're a 24/7 organization, so she was here at dark 30 hours and here after work on many days. She became an entrenched member of our department over those period of weeks. She's been a volunteer for some time, and while I'm talking about her as a volunteer, I'd also like to recognize our volunteers in policing. This is the same organization that volunteers 6,500 hours of service to our community, to our organization on an annual basis, and they don't get the credit they deserve, so please give them a round of applause. So I believe that Jasmine did a wonderful job capturing the essence of what Lemoore is all about. She probably didn't know that she was going to be following a tractor around town or be riding in a bucket overhead and taking beautiful shots of Lemoore Volunteer Fire Department and their, their equipment in our community as we came together on that final day. So Jasmine, on behalf of the members of the Lemoore Police Department, our community, leadership in Lemoore, thank you very much for all your efforts, your dedication and commitment to bringing this project to a, a conclusion that we're very proud of. And I'd also like to thank our community members because without you, we would not be successful in what we do in our city. So give yourself a round of applause. And we count bearing gifts, Jasmine, tonight, so we have a plaque, and I'll read the plaque. With our greatest appreciation, we hereby honor Jasmine Gomez in recognition of your hard work, time, and dedicated service to the Lemoore Police Department's Lip Sync Challenge Video, August 2018. And Jason Stevens is another one that I want to recognize. Jason was one of the main stars in our video, and he does have rhythm, and he looked pretty sharp doing his part. But he was also instrumental in organizing this event with Jasmine, as well as many other officers within the Police Department, so I want to give them recognition. And Jason has a special gift for you tonight as well, Jasmine.
We wanted to, we wanted to present Jasmine with her own shadow box commemorating the event. Again, she, I can't tell you how many times I texted her at about 10 or 11 at night or 6, 7 in the morning, 5 in the morning, and she was right back to me, ready to come out whenever need be to get this done. I don't think people realize how special of an event this really was for the community, and can't say enough thanks to her for dedicating her time and effort to really showcasing Lemoore and what we're all about, which is community, and fantastic job, and thank you again.
One gift. Come on in.
Good afternoon. On behalf of Assemblymember Rudy Sauce Office, we would like to present you Jasmine, Lemoore Police Department Lip Sync Challenge. In honor of your outstanding contributions and your continued investment in the community of Lemoore, we commend your efforts. Thank you so much.
Couple of ladies.
One more. I would also like to present, in honor of, in honor of your outstanding contributions and your continued investment in the community of Lemoore, we commend your efforts, and this is for the Lemoore Police Department. Thank you so much.
Can we get a photo of her up here? Yeah.
Not here. Thank you, Ted.
Good evening, mayors, mayor and council members. Just a couple of reports tonight, starting off with Jason Gleick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Wanted to update the council and the, and the city on a few events that are coming up. Parks and Recreation, this is typically a very busy time, entering the fall season with special events and community-wide special events, and we got quite a bit going on over the next few months. This Saturday, August 25th, from 5 to 9, is Lions Brew Fest at Lions Park. Saturday, August 25th, also this Saturday, is Opening Day for Youth Soccer. It's the annual Lemoore Soccer Fest. They have 30 teams from Lemoore, Kings County, Tulare County, Fresno County. So that's, this is the kickoff for the Youth Sports Complex, and we'll, we'll continue to update council on what's going to be going on over the next couple of months over at the complex. Saturday, September 1st, is Rumble at the Rec. Way-ins at 10, boxing starts at 3:00. Saturday, September 15th, at 6:00 PM, is a mother and son dance at the CMC. Saturday, September 22nd, is a K-Fun concert at Kings Lions Park. There's a ZZ Top cover band. Friday, September 28th, is Rockin' the Arbor. It's okay, Amy, that I updated everyone on Rockin' the Arbor? Saturday, September 29th, at 7:00 PM, we're, we're doing a new event at the Lemoore Golf Course. It's called Opera on the Green. And Saturday, October 27th, we're rescheduling our golf tournament because of, of, because of the event at the Surf Ranch, and we reschedule that from September 8th to Saturday, October 27th. And this, this tournament's a fundraiser for the Youth Scholarship Fund. It starts at 1 o'clock over at the Lemoore Golf Course, and again, it's Saturday, September 27th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next up is Judy Hallwell.
Every month, the State of California Employment Development Department post data information about the unemployment rates. And so last month, the preliminary unemployment rate for July 2018 for the city of Lemoore was 5.9%. That compares to Kings County as a whole, 7.5%. Lemoore is the lowest, we do have the lowest unemployment rate in Kings County. The state of California is 4.4%. And then I can say that Fresno, I'll, I'll compare Kings Counties, which was the 7.5, and ours the 5.9. Fresno's was 7.2%, Kern County 8.2%, Madera 7.0%, Merced County 8.1%, and Tulare County And that is posted at www.labormarketinfo.edu.ca.gov.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Good evening, mayor and council members. So I have a couple of updates. Michelle Spear and I spent half a day with the, out at the Navy Base today to talk about IGSA's intergovernmental service contracts, or service agreements, and it's a way to leverage services to maybe help save taxpayer money from both sides. So good, good preliminary meeting. We're looking for more discussions with the Navy Base as we go forward to help support them and vice, vice versa. Additionally, the 80-acre development agreement has cleared its draft form. It'll be going to the Planning Commission next, at their next meeting, and coming to you for hopefully approval to kick off that 80-acre development along Highway 41. And then lastly, I want to confirm the direction of city council that the use of alcohol is prohibited in any public building, and in particular, the fire station. Also want to address a possible exception to this possibility with council. Historically, retirees of the department have been gathering for monthly dinners with existing volunteers. After meeting with current and a few retired volunteers and with some input from community members, I am seeking consensus from council to allow the monthly dinners to be held in accordance with past tradition, including having a designated shift of volunteers who do not attend the dinner to be available for calls, should they come in. The volunteers designated to be on duty that evening will forego the dinner and only go to the station if called upon. Once the call is over, they will return to the firehouse and return the equipment and leave the area. I have cleared this request with the RMA and other local safety organizations, so I'm, I'm looking for consensus.
I'll say yes.
Yes, absolutely.
I concur.
Concur.
I thank you, and if you would forward that to the Police Department, the retirees are, can have their dinners back. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. All right, consent calendar. Section 3, we have eight items. Council, are there any items that you wish to have pulled for further discussion?
3-1.
I like 3-2, and 3-4, and 3-5.
So let's see, item 3-1, 3-2, 3-3?
No, 3-4.
Okay, 3-4 and 3-5. Are there any others?
3 has got a card. What's that? She said 3 has a card.
Oh, that's right. Okay, this one here. Okay, and so we also have public comment requests for 3-8, so I will pull that one as well. So let me make sure I got this right. So we will pull 3-1, 3-2, 3-4, 3-5, and 3-8. That leaves 3-3, 3-6, and 3-7 on the consent calendar. I have a motion to approve those items as part of the consent calendar.
Make a motion to approve 3-3, 3-6, and 3-7. I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Chedister to approve 3-3, 3-6, and 3-7 of the consent calendar. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We will go ahead and move to item 3-1, which is approval of minutes.
Good evening, mayor, council members. There are actually two corrections. They are both under the Regular City Council Meeting section. The first one is the city staff and contract employees present. I incorrectly reported that Community Services Director Hallwell was here, and it actually should read Community Development Director Hallwell. Also, in Section 6-1, which is the City Council Reports and Requests, per the request of Mayor Pro Tem Neal, the original statement in the, again, this is the Council Reports and Requests, it stated, "Mayor Pro Tem Neal asks to please keep Billy Siegel and Joe Avila in mind. Life is too short." This will be amended to, "Mayor Pro Tem Neal asks to please keep the families of Billy Siegel and Joe Avila in prayer. This is a trying time for them. Life is too short." Again, as a reminder to council and the general public, the city of Lemoore minutes are action minutes with a summary during public comment and council reports and requests.
Thank you. We will go to 3-Truth, 2.
I'll make a motion to approve 3-1.
Second. Well, let's see if there's any, is there any public comment on that? No, okay, so.
Make a motion to approve 3-1. Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Chedister, second by Mr. Brown to approve 3-1. Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So item 3-1 is approved as amended. Now we will go to item 3-2, which is approval agreement with Self-Help Enterprise for Affordable Housing Loan Portfolio Management Services.
Did you have a specific question?
No, just a description of what's going on, because I, I know that a few people will wonder when they see this on the campus.
Okay, so the last couple of years, well, let me back up. In 2011, State of California eliminated redevelopment in, in all of California, and along with that, funding for Housing Specialist was taken away. So we had a housing specialist here that was paid with redevelopment agency money, and she stuck around for a few more years, and her duties were assigned to the city manager's office. After she left, those duties still had to be maintained because we're still responsible to the State of California to report on all of our affordable housing loans and grants and covenants that were issued back when we had redevelopment. And so in order to manage all of those contracts that we have, we have in the past contracted with self-help enterprises to maintain all of those files. And so this is just a continuation, basically, of that agreement, except it has been redefined and, and reduced in the amount. The first year it was 68,000, the second year was like 38,000, 35,000, and now it's been reduced down to just a little over 10,000 because we've reduced the number of loan agri- reduced down to just a little over 10,000 because we've reduced the number of loan agreements, covenants that are in place. So that number will continue to reduce down until, well, some of the, some of the covenants are for 45 and 55 years because if they're multifamily housing, they're 55 years. So someone has to continue to maintain these.
Any questions? Great explanation, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Item 3-2. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion and vote. I have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve 3-2 as proposed.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Chedister and a second by Mr. Brown to approve 3-2. Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item is passed. We will go to item 3-4. Approval real, real property license agreement with Bush Construction for portions of APN 024-052-075 and APN 024-052-076.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Did you have a specific question?
No, just a description of what's going on. I've had a lot of community members ask about the agenda lately and just, what does that, what does that mean? And I'm not the best person to explain that. And I just wanted to give you an opportunity to kind of explain to the public that is now watching on social media what's going on, so it helps answer those questions ahead of time.
Okay. Back in 2016, the city of Lamoore and Bush Construction entered into an agreement to allow Bush Construction to deposit construction debris of non-hazardous materials onto a city-owned property that we currently are not in the interest of developing at this time. It was for the tune of $475, and their contract from 2016 expired in October of 2017. Several months ago, we were reached out to by Bush Construction and they asked if we would be interested in renewing their lease agreement that will require that they return the property back to its original state at any such time the city decides not to continue with the lease agreement. In this particular contract, we have recommended to council that it be for a term of two years. It'll be slightly less than two years since we're adopting tonight, and it'll expire July 31st of 2020 with a 90-day termination clause. So either party can terminate with 90 days written notice if at such time the city council decided that they no longer wanted to continue with the agreement.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion or vote.
Great explanation, thank you. So I can make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Ms. Blair and a second by Mr. Brown to approve item 3-4. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 3-4 is passed, thank you.
Thank you.
Move to item 3-5, which is approval appointment of downtown merchants advisory member.
Good evening again. There was an unexpected vacancy that occurred on the downtown merchants advisory board, or, I'm sorry, committee. Their term expired on, or will expire on December 31st, 2019. The vacancy was posted as required. We received two applications. Per our current policy, the mayor received the application, applications, he reviewed the applications, and as a result, he is recommending Thomas Nix to be appointed. For this to be effective, he has to have a concurrence of at least two council members.
Is there any questions? No. I do, I would like to add on that item, that it has been my practice as mayor, whenever we get these vacancies, I do reach out personally to speak to all the applicants, to get to know them more than just what's written on paper. And I had a really good discussion with both applicants. Mr. Pereira from Pereira Jewelry and Mr. Nix, who has elaborate business downtown now. They were both very qualified, very committed. I was leaning towards Mr. Pereira because he's been on the committee before, he's been a longtime member of the, the business community in downtown. And he offered to actually let Mr. Nix sit on, on the association, on the committee. It was really difficult because Mr. Nix had a lot of enthusiasm, a newer business owner. And so I was glad that Mr. Pereira offered that because he said he will still be involved, even though not as official member of that committee, but he will still be involved. So it felt like we were getting two for one on that one. So that's why I made those recommend, the recommendation that I did.
I concur.
I concur.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve then? Is that a motion?
You just need two. You just need two concurrence.
Okay, two concurrence, okay, so we got it. Thank you very much. So now we will go to, let's see, item 3-8. Approval acceptance of subdivision agreement noise and odor easement and final map tract 839, which is Energy Homes Incorporated DBA GJ Gardner Homes.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. Is there any specific questions I can answer?
It wasn't us, it was a card.
After, we'll have public comment. Go ahead.
On Jan, on January night, 2006, city council approved investing tentative map subdivision map number 2005-01 for tract 839. Time extensions have been processed, so all previously approved conditions retain, remain intact. GJ Gardner has taken over tract 839, and the subdivision agreement consisting of 36 single-family lots is attached for your review. The subdivision is located west of the Stub Streets of Cabrillo and Otero Street. The site is adjacent to the self-help subdivision located west of Vine Street. The subdivision map and construction drawings have been reviewed and approved by staff and city engineer. In addition, the bonds have been submitted per the subdivision agreement, and the applicable fees have been paid. The request for inclusion of tract 839 in the landscape and lighting maintenance district number one, Zone 11, is also included at this time. Staff request the approval of the subdivision agreement for tract 839 with Energy Homes Incorporated DBA GJ Gardner Homes and authorize the city manager to sign, accept, and record final subdivision map with additional documents and begin the process to include tract 839 in landscape and lighting maintenance district number one, Zone 11.
Any questions?
No.
We do have one comment for, one card for public comment on this item, Mr. James Collins. Are you here?
Good evening, mayor, council members. I, I have to apologize, Frank, I think my interest of making a comment here required you to come up and address the issue as opposed to staying in the, the consent calendar. But I did just want to say a couple of things as representative GJ Gardner Homes. One, I wanted to commend to you, your planning department and your public works department, many of whom I interacted with on a very detailed basis, and was very impressed with the professionalism, the friendliness, the cooperation that we received in working with them. So we just really enjoyed that process, look forward to more of that to come in the future. Wanted to thank you members here for hearing our interest and hopefully approving our request. And, and lastly, just to say that GJ Gardner Homes, even though it's not an 80-acre development, we're excited to develop this little piece of property and see it add to the, the beauty and best of Lamoore. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and vote. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 3-8 as, for the, to approve the subdivision agreement for tract number 839 with Energy Homes.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Chedister and a second by Mr. Neal to approve item 3-8. Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The item is passed, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we will move on. Public hearings, as I said, will be continued to another date, both of those items. We will go to item 5-1 under new business with, which is report and recommendation budget amendment refuse position allocation by Mr. Rivera.
During, during the budget process, the refuse department requested two maintenance workers to keep up with current needs and prepare for future demand of development in organic waste collection. Of the two requested, one maintenance worker was approved, but didn't I get, but didn't I get allocated in the 1819 fiscal year budget. This was noticed prior to the finalization of the budget. Staff delayed the request, hoping to hold off until mid-year to allow the new refuse truck to arrive. If this position is to be held off until then, staff will be shuffling men and trucks around to deal with situations which are already stretched to their limits and possibly not fully, fully prepared for AB 1826, which takes effect January 1st of 2019, which I think is in your, in your documents. In order to provide our citizens with service needs that they expect and to assure that our city employees are not extending themselves with overweight loads, staff feels that the hiring process needs to happen sooner than later. The expectation is to have a person hired and trained so that when the truck arrives, they are ready to start their truck route. This maintenance worker will be paid out of the refuse enterprise funds. Do you have any questions?
Do we have any public comment on this matter? Okay, seeing no.
I just want to make sure that we reiterate for, for people that will ask, I know. So the funding is not coming from the general fund, it is coming from our enterprising fund in order to fund this position, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I know that'll be asked, so.
So no other questions, no public comment, we'll bring it to council for vote. Have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve item 5-1.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Ms. Blair and a second by Mr. Brown to approve item 5-1. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item is passed. Now we will move to item 5-2. Report and recommendation. This is a request for censure from, it's resolution 2018-42. This will be by our city attorney, Ms. Van Vinsbergen. And when we do go to public comment, I do ask the public once again, as I did last time, please maintain decorum, courtesy. I know this is, can be, it was an emotional item last time. Really need to try to address the issues factually and objectively as possible and refrain from any unwarranted or inappropriate comments. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members, citizens. The item before you is a continuation of the censure process. At the last meeting, council decided to move forward with the censure, and council members provided confidential communications to me as city attorney, which I used to draft a, the draft resolution. This resolution has been served to the, made available to the public, has been served on all council members. Tonight, council will have the option to adopt the resolution as is, make changes as they feel appropriate, all after Ms. Blair has had the opportunity to respond to the resolution and any statements made therein, and public has had a chance to comment. And they'll take any questions.
Are there any questions? Ms. Blair, would you like to respond to the censure?
I thought the comment, the public spoke first and then I gave a response, is that correct?
Counsel, you can do it either way, but Ms. Blair, you can respond.
I'd rather wait until the public has an opportunity to speak, please.
Do we have any other comments from, questions at this point by council?
I have a written statement.
I will open it up to public comment at this time. Are there any members of the public that wish to come forward on this item?
Connie Wulashen, 523 C Street in Lamoore. This is really hard for me, and I'm going to, I have something prepared, and I, I know you said that we should address the council, not just Ms. Blair. And I am going to figuratively turn my back on her because of her disrespect to me personally and to you and other members of the Lamoore City Council and to the citizens of Lamoore. I, I, it's important to add that council member Blair's conduct has brought embarrassment, discredit, and has defamed the fine reputation of the city of Lamoore. As a citizen and business owner for 33 and a half years in Lamoore, I am proud of my city, but Ms. Blair has prophetized not only on social media, but on TV, and negative and disparaging comments about Lamoore, which should not and cannot be permitted without punitive consequences. And finally, I would ask that Ms. Blair not portray herself as a victim, because everybody in this room has a story. And then I would also ask you to climb down off the cross, somebody needs the wood.
I have a question, that may be off base here, but I hate to say like a relative mind, believe it or not, Will Rogers says all I know is what I read in the newspaper. Well nowadays, it's all you know is what you read in Facebook. Exactly what is in the censure? All I know is what I've read on Facebook.
Mayor and council member, members of the citizenry, copies of the resolution are up here if you would like copies.
Paul Harvey, Wednesday.
It should have also been attached to the agenda this evening.
It is, it is attached to the agenda too for, as public record, it has been since Friday when the agenda came out. Apparently, some of you didn't know that we have copies of it here, hard copies. If anybody would like to get a copy that doesn't have one, do we have any more available? We have a whole bunch up here, if anyone would like to come forward and have that Do you open the floodgate? We're still in public comment.
Kristen Curcio, Lamoore resident. I think at this point, it's pretty senseless. I think that we've all said all that we needed to say. I think you've said enough for everyone, and I think that we're doing the right thing. Please sign the recall, it's important. It's important to stand up. There are a lot of things that we cannot do when it comes voting for presidents and things like that. This is something that is in our control. We are the people, we are the ones that elected you, and we are the ones that are going to take you out.
Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. I do have an item here. I guess this would be the right time to bring this forward. This is a letter that I was asked to read into the record as part of public comment, so I'll go ahead and do that, so please bear with me. This is a letter from the California Correctional Peace Officers Association. It is dated August 20th, the Lamoore City Council. Dear Lamoore City Council, members of the California Correctional Peace Officers Association, CCPOA, are very concerned with what has been transpiring lately at the city council meetings. We have witnessed violations of the city's law enforcement officers POBR rights. As an organization who fights daily for due process rights of our members, we are discouraged by the blatant disregard for the rights of the due process for the men and women of law enforcement in this community. We feel it is our duty to call out this injustice and insist that your council adhere to the statutes according to the Public Safety Officers Procedural Bill of Rights Act and the Brown Act. Lamoore Police Department and their chief, Daryl Smith, has conducted themselves with exemplary professionalism under the failures of their elected leadership. It's been a privilege to observe Chief Smith in the exceptional administration of his department. Chief Smith is a man of Chief Smith is a man of honor and integrity who loves and values the community he serves. Thank you, Chief Smith, for being the type of person and leader the residents of Lemoore can glean from and aspire to be, a man who is beyond reproach. Sincerely, this is signed by Joe Carrasco, CCPOA President. Okay, so there's no other comment, we'll bring it back to, for any questions or discussion.
Mayor, I would recommend that Councilwoman Blair have a chance to respond at this time.
Ms. Blair, would you like to respond at this time?
Yes, I have a written statement, so please bear with me. And I'll provide a copy to the clerk when I'm done. Who are they going to believe, you or me? Those are words that Lemoore Chief, Police Chief Daryl Smith said to me in a private meeting after I brought up concerns about the police force. I took that as a threat. Nathan Olson was also present in the room at that time. For the first nine years I lived in Lemoore, I never had one negative experience with law enforcement. Then, I voted against Lemoore Police Chief Daryl Smith's choice for city manager, Nathan Olson. Immediately after that, I was pulled over numerous times by local law enforcement for trivial and sometimes nonexistent offenses. I was followed many more times, including being followed and pulled over by a local police officer while outside the city limits of Lemoore. I also had the police called on me numerous times for nonexistent offenses. I don't know if the individual officers were acting independently, if they were being directed from above, or if the citizens who were angry at my vote were weaponizing the police. But I do know that the probability of having so many police encounters in such a short period of time after nine years without a single negative encounter cannot be a coincidence. I was either being targeted, or I was the luckiest person alive. I tried to address the situation privately with the chief and to avoid a public spectacle. Shortly after bringing this issue up, Chief Smith yelled at me in our aforementioned meeting for questioning the mayor on social media, as if it were any of his business. He also criticized me for using the term feminism. He asked me if my bosses at West Hills College knew about me using the term feminism on my social media page, as if that were something that would get me in trouble. Shortly after this, defibratory lies about my interactions with local police were printed in a local blog run by a friend of the Mr. Mayor, Madrigal, a friend that has already cost the city tens of thousands of dollars in legal costs after doing the same thing to a previous council member. That council member left me with nearly three hundred pages of documentation related to that person, which is now in the hands of my legal counsel. When I asked for dash cam or vest cam videos of these supposed serious incidences, I was told that there was no video, and they refused to write me with any reports. After getting confirmation from the city manager, Nathan Olson, that there was a close familial relationship between him and Chief Smith, I asked for an independent investigation into my experience with local law enforcement. Chief Smith responded by claiming that if he lived in my district, he would recall me. What Chief Smith failed to mention is that he does reside within my supervisory district, where he recently ran for county supervisor, the same position that I ran for in 2014. Since that meeting, I've been subjected to a constant barrage of online harassment and bullying by members of local law enforcement and their families. This bullying has included racist and misogynistic attacks, and has even included attacks on my husband and our five children. In the wake of the meeting, these are on social media. In the wake of the meeting, Chief Daryl Smith also attempted to intimidate me into silence by sending me a baseless legal threat from his personal lawyer. And I have also had my job at West Hills College threatened multiple times by people related in some way to local law enforcement, including our mayor. I have shared a small portion of these vitriolic online attacks on my social media, and will be sharing much more in the coming days. I am being censured because I refuse to remain silent in the face of these vile attacks. This council claims that it is unbecoming of a council member to respond in the way that I have to this online bullying. To the contrary, I maintain that it is not only appropriate, but also the duty of any good leader to forcefully push back against this repulsive behavior. For two years, I tried to work with Daryl Smith and Ray Madrigal in a collegial manner. But as soon as I disagreed with their leadership decisions, they took advantage of my trust and attacked me personally, rather than having a substantial policy debate. Due to this shattered trust, I now have to question every interaction I have with law enforcement. Some of the decisions I have disagreed with include failing to pay our firefighters for nearly five months and instead wasting the city's time discussing my Twitter feed, decimating the beautiful trees on Fox Street without a clear plan for revitalizing the area, and failing to do proper research regarding a possible ordinance change regarding mobile food vendors. After I pointed out a factually incorrect statement by Councilmember Brown regarding a mobile food vendor, Mr. Brown had the audacity to tell me I could criticize him, but not do it in public. In April, Mr. Madrigal asked me on the dais if I thought he was a misogynist. The answer is yes, absolutely. When I first met Mr. Madrigal, I did not ask him for an endorsement, rather I inquired as to why he had already endorsed Jeff Chedister for city council without least meeting with me first. Instead of addressing my question, his response was to ask if I really had five kids. He then proceeded to ask how old I was and how old my oldest child was, as if that was anything to do, had anything to do with my ability to serve on city council. I responded by asking if he would have asked a man that. He responded by saying that if he looked as young as me, then he would have. I don't believe that for a second. After being elected to council, our relationship did not improve. Upon learning that my initial encounter with Mr. Madrigal had offended me, Chief Smith recommended that I attempt to clear the air by bringing the issue up privately with Mr. Madrigal. In doing so, Mr. Madrigal's response was to point his finger at me and to tell me that I had better not repeat that. Mr. Madrigal has also repeatedly yelled and chastised me, as though I were a child that should submit to him behind our closed doors. There are witnesses on this council to this repeated inappropriate behavior towards me. Their silence speaks volumes to the women in our community. Rather than doing their due diligence and treating my concerns seriously by having an independent investigation, this council has chosen instead to attack me and censure me, all in an effort to intimidate me into silence. I have to ask, why would a man who puts the word integrity next to his name not want an independent review of such serious concerns within the department he oversees? What is the Lemoore Police Chief Daryl Smith so afraid of? As why, and why would a council, which has expressed so much concern over the city possibly being sued over me posting my opinions on social media, not be concerned with much more serious allegations? What is this council, and what is our mayor so afraid of? I want to make it perfectly clear to everyone on this council, to Police Chief Daryl Smith, and to the community members that have chosen to, or have been incited to, weaponize the police against me, that I will not resign, and I will not be bullied or intimidated into silence. I look forward to being censured by this council. I will wear it as a badge of honor. I will frame it, and I will put it on my wall, for I know that I am advocating for the entire community of Lemoore, and not just for a select few. Thank you.
Okay, please, please refrain. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
No.
Is there any discussion, council?
No.
I'd like to say a couple things. With the censure, what made me look and want to do the censure, it wasn't the, all the screaming and going on. This is not my first rodeo. I've been through this before. I must say, accusations is not the first amendment. Now, you can always talk about why you don't like somebody, but when you make false accusations, there becomes a problem. That's the only censure that I'm dealing with. I'm not dealing with freedom of speech. Whatever she want to do on, on her Facebook wall, let her do it. It's you guys' opportunity to recall her. It looks like that's what's going to happen. But I'm asking, I'm asking you guys right now, far as trying to contain her and tell her what she can say and what she can't say, the first amendment, if that's the case, look at all Trump going through right now, President Trump. Look at all the people who bash him right now. Not only him, the president before that. You can't put, this is not a communist country. I want to say that too. We can't shut nobody up, but we can get out of here if we do the right procedures. We got, we got to have class when we do things. I don't like going on Facebook and everybody telling me, and we looking like Wild Kingdom, Jay Springer around here. It, it, it don't make no sense. And I can care less, be honest with you, how people feel. I'm like my old man. I have to look to the hills with coming my health, all my health comes from the Lord. I can't sit back and want to be with the get along game, want to be with this group, want to be with that group. I know some of the groups, they don't intimidate me. But I must say one thing, whenever you make false accusations of all the more police officers who risk their lives, every day, put that badge on. And then if something happened to them right now because somebody disrespected them because what they heard on this note, we're in a, we're in a, we're in a mess. So, I'm just letting you know what I'm standing for.
Just real quick, I'll add that this is the citizens of Lemoore's time, and it's up to you guys. We've done all we could by passing, and if we do pass this agenda item, we've done all that we could right now, so the rest is up to you guys. And I, I trust you'll do the right thing, whatever that might be. So, at this point, there's so much we can do from up here on the dais. And we've said plenty last, last meeting, so that's all I have to say for now.
Only thing I got to say is, I've, I've been saying it since April. I still stand behind what I stated from day one. And that's it, so.
Yeah, I think I just have to, I'm going to listen to Mr. Reed, wherever you are, Mr. Reed. I think it's the time to just let the record speak for itself. You guys have a chance to look at the censure. From what I've heard, I think you all know what's going on here. You understand the truth. There's no need to defend myself or anybody about what Ms. Blair has said today. I'm just going to let her actions speak for them. And unfortunately, this is all we can do. It is a public censure. I will say that in the history of the city of Lemoore, as far as I know, there's never been one, have we ever found? So, it's pretty serious. It's never gone this far in the history of this city. So, let that, I guess, speak to what's going on here. I would like to read, because people ask, what does it mean? What does it, you know, what are the consequences? I mean, let me read the last paragraphs of that, please. You guys have it, but I do like, want to read the last paragraphs. So, on page six, I would like to let you know that there are certain consequences to this. Obviously, maybe not to what some of you would like, but as Mr. Chedister said earlier, the rest is up to you. In accordance with the City of Lemoore Council Rules and Procedures, Chapter 3, A2, which states failure by any council member to follow these expectations could result in action taken by the city council as a whole, as allowed by law, including but not limited to public censure. The city council of the city of Lemoore thus hereby publicly censors Councilmember Blair for engaging in the foregoing conduct which has caused undue disruption, potential liability exposure, and loss of trust and confidence in her by the other city council members. Admonishes Councilmember Blair to cease engaging in such conduct or similar conduct in the future, so that the council may regain trust and confidence in her, in her going forward, and thus allowing the council to perform its duties in the best interest of the public. And finally, removes Councilmember Blair from any committee or board she sits on in her capacity as a council member, and bans her from representing the city and the council at public functions in any official capacity. So, at this time, I guess there's no other further discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve 5-2, Request for Censor, Resolution 2018, Act 42, as written.
I'll second it.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Chedister to approve item 5-2, which is the public censure, Councilmember Blair, and it is a resolution that will be part of the city record for the rest of history. So, Mr. Brown, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
I vote aye. Okay, city council reports. Ms. Blair?
I have nothing to report today.
I have a King's EDC meeting, Economic Development Corporation meeting Monday. And then tomorrow, and that's, I'll be reporting on that at the next council meeting. And then tomorrow, we have a CART meeting for rural transit. It's going to be held at 3:30 at the Kings County Board of Supervisors Room. And then after that, is a K-CAG meeting. It's open to the public, so if you're in Hanford, want to stop by, see what's going on, come on by.
No report.
Mr. Neal?
Well, I'm so happy, Mr. Reed, that you read that. It's one of the siblings, had nothing to do with city council business. Me and my brother, we get along just fine, let somebody put their hands on me and see. I'm just keeping it real. We might not see eye to eye all the time. Everybody's like that. Every family's like that. But my brother loves me, and I love him. That's first, I want to get that off my chest. Okay, far as to Lemoore, what does Lemoore want? I put on my Facebook, because I got over five thousand friends, and I put on my Facebook, do you think we need retail? And do you think we need forest stores and restaurants here? Me and my wife went to Olive Garden Sunday, because we was talking about restaurants so much on Facebook. We got to go to Hanford, we got to go outside this place to eat. I'm not taking away from the Vineyard Inn, I'm not taking away from Jack in the Box, McDonald's, Hispanic food, we got the best. But I'm going to say, it would be good if we got a franchise in here, even Olive Garden, something in here that, that's going to bring people here. For, instead of talking about taxing the people, let's talk about bringing revenue in here, which is, it don't have to be a lot. Just bring something new here for, to entertain us in Lemoore. Because Lemoore has the base right here, we have 41, we have 198, it's an artery, it's an artery that everybody's going to hit. And for our police officers to go into a Jack in the Box and be in that long line because they taking a break to get something to eat late at night, because that's the only thing open, I think they deserve more than Jack in the Box. I think they do, they deserve more than 7-Eleven. And so, furthermore, what are we going to do? It's good to bring in, it's good to bring in light industrial, and it's good to bring in all that, but what are we going to do about the people that are crying here for restaurants and stores? I mean, I know, I've been, I'm born and raised here, my family came out here in the 40s. People can scratch their head, I could talk you guys there, if I'm not going to do that. But, I'm going to say this, Lemoore is growing. Get the big fish out of the small tank, let it grow. Please, our council, let it grow. I seen what town's done in other places. And I say, why don't we have that? Why don't we have, we have to go all these different areas, why can't we, why can't we be like, even Kingsburg? Now, Kermit City! I mean, we have to do something. I know we want to keep it a small-town environment, we, we don't want the Walleye World, the Walmart, we don't want this, we don't want, okay, what do we want? We need something for you guys. And here I am, I'm screaming, and we have to bring people on board that want things. Sometimes you have to be proactive, think outside the box. And should we do that, we're just going to, it's like a slow cancer, we die. And downtown is not going to, I hear people say, if you bring this here, it's going to kill our downtown. What is, what's going on downtown right now? It makes me, well, it's already dead. I'm not saying kill it, I'm saying, any kind of way we could build it, let's build it, but let's don't take away from what we can grow. God bless.
Thank you. I would like to report on one item. I was invited and attended the West Hills College District Chancellor's address on Thursday, August 9th, and Dr. Stuart Van Horn, the chancellor of the district, made a very good presentation about what's going on out there on both campuses, especially and particularly in Lemoore. West Hills College, Lemoore, is, I've, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, is a jewel of this city. We need to take advantage of it, we need to partner with them as much as we can. Mr. Neal has mentioned, you know, growing and that sort of thing, and absolutely, we do need that. That area is what our, our general plan calls for. The infrastructure was purposely built to increase capacity out there. The, the infrastructure was purposely built to increase capacity out there. I think it's something that we really need to push and move forward on to, for this city to grow. There's great opportunity out there. Mr., like I said, Dr. Van Horn did a great job of all the things that they're doing, not just as far as the traditional educational classes, but also a lot of technical jobs that they're doing out there. They actually teach people out there to drive a truck. It's about, I think he said it's like a four-week course. They just had several people graduate from that and get jobs, so that's the kind of thing we, we need. And that's what that school is doing out there. So I am really thankful that I was able to, to attend that meeting. The other thing is, I do want to mention to city staff and the city manager, thank you for what you're doing for Champions Recovery. They recently made an agreement to take over what used to be the Blue Door downtown. They are bringing a restaurant to that location. Dr. Hernandez, Crystal Hernandez, wanted to, me to say thank you to all of the city staff for what they did to make that process go as smoothly as possible. She said she was thankfully surprised for how well it went. What she's gonna do there is she's actually, like I said, creating a restaurant, but people that come from her program, people that have had some issues with addiction and that sort of thing, this gives them an opportunity to learn some job skills, to get something on their resume. So I really appreciate what you guys have done. I just can't, she was very thankful of, of what we did there, so that's all I have.
Ma'am, quickly.
Yes.
So, real quick, I want to address economic development. Early stages, but a couple things that are, that are going on is, we've redirected one staff member to spend 75% of their time dedicated to economic development. The plan is coming very soon. I can tell you that we've been walking as a city, the downtown area, and compiling a list of all the vacant areas. We recently met with a local business owner that we put in contact with, a vacant building that will be opening a surf shop within the next 30 days in Lemoore. And along with that comes the backing of a Central Coast major player in the, the surf game that's going to give them equipment on assignment. You'll be able to buy like Nikes in Lemoore at this place, there'll be apparel. We also have met with King's EDC and the Small Business SBDC Development Center, and Lemoore is looking to be the pilot of a 14-week program that we put kids or young adults or even any adult through an entrepreneur-type 10-week class, three, four hours a night. And we're trying to make Lemoore the centerpiece of that and the pilot program, and we're reaching out to all these vacant lots to try, try to help bring downtown revitalization back. Ekdev, I wish it was easy to bring people here. The city doesn't own many properties, don't have a lot of leverage, don't have a lot to offer. So we have a lot of private, privately owned, that, you know, we, we direct people to and we work with them all the time. But I want to thank my staff for all the time and effort they put into it. The fruits of our labor are hard, and you will see, you will see some things coming together here in the, in the future, but it's, doesn't happen overnight. But I can assure you that nobody on this team is ignoring any lead, not turning over every leaf and going after everything we get. I've talked to 100 restaurants since I've been put in this position. And we're working on it. We got three in the pipeline as potentials, and I'm going to be coming to you asking for money, 'cause I have to go after money for development agreements and things of that nature to get them to fruition, but we're close, so we're working. I promise you that. Thank you.
If I may. I was looking at Chris Con, they brung $1.3 million there. Was that on the dispatch center?
Yes, and I believe it was 939,000.
What was the 1.3 for?
I believe it was 939,000, not 1.3.
Okay, they never brung 1.3 million in, Lemoore?
I can answer that.
Yes.
So I'm not real sure about your 1.3 figure, but in the past, the 939 was for the funding for the dispatch center. And prior to that, they were involved with some federal earmark money that came to Lemoore in the task force, the Narcotics and the Gang Task Force, where we put extra personnel there.
That was 300, was that 300,000 for the Gang Task Force?
It's something like that. I'm not going to quote the exact number, but that, that may be why you have the figure of 1.3.
All, for all together?
Exactly.
They brung it up. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
And council member Neal, I can say that a few weeks ago, we met with a rep from Senator Harris's office, and we are putting together white sheets for a $50 million ask to help with Lemoore water infrastructure wastewater plans.
Good deal.
And no guarantees, but we're pushing the fact that we are not a disadvantaged community. We were skipped over on all the opportunity zones for growth, and that our small town of 26,000 is funding all these projects 100% out of the taxpayer's pocket. Will it go anywhere? I don't know, but we're never going to get an answer if we don't ask.
That's right.
So I'm, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on, and maybe I need to do a better, better job reporting that out, but I assure you, we're doing what we can for the city.
If I may, I think you're doing an awesome job. If you look at that sewer water treatment over there, you guys got that dick machine over there, it's cleaning the water out, and I don't know how much it, it's going to kill us at the end, or I think you're doing a good job, though. I just think that you're doing a good job. You're, you're coming, we're all, everything you do, you rise to the occasion. And I just want to let you know, we do appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
I would like to say thank you to Mr. Nathan, to your staff. Economic development is not easy. It's very, very difficult. It really involves an investor coming to this city and investing their money because they think they can make money. I see Supervisor Verboon right here in the row. He did that exact over there in the, in that Starbucks shopping center. He invested his, his money because he thought he could make money here. So we need to focus not on, say, the traditional, the traditional objects of what economic development means. We're not the ideal city, apparently, that we've been told many times that we don't have enough rooftops, and that's what keeps people from coming here. But we do have to look at the incremental things that we do. I think we need to keep a track of all those little incremental things, like what you're talking about, like what Crystal Hernandez, Dr. Crystal Hernandez says about our staff and what we do to welcome businesses here. Those are signs of economic development, and if we continue in that path, we stay that course, we maintain, we stay with our strategic initiatives that we work with. We have a five-year plan for strategic initiatives, and if we stay on that course, things are going to happen here. They don't happen overnight. I've been here for four years, and I wish I could snap my fingers and bring Denny's here. But you know what? I'm sure we've asked them, and they decided not to.
Talked to them last week.
So it's not for lack of trying, but like I said, the things that we're doing here at the city, and most importantly, most importantly, what we say here on the dais, because people listen, I've said that many, many times, developers will listen to this, they'll be watching us on Facebook, they'll be listening to the recording tomorrow morning, and they're going to see, how does this council behave? What kind of commitment do they have to economic development? So when I talk about West Hills and the opportunities out there in that area, what I taught, when I talk about what Dr. Crystal Hernandez said about your staff and how welcoming they were, those are the kinds of things they listen to. So we have to remember that as a council. What we say is very, very critical, and I think we're doing a good job, and things are going to happen. We're on the verge of some big things here in this city. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.